Okay, we are at 7:01 PM on May 3rd, 2021. Kind of call this meeting Atlantic City Council to order and ask that the clerk, welcome clerk Jackson, please call the roll.
Okay, council member Bets.
Right here.
And you please share your location.
Participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Thank you, council member Dunbar.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Council member Garza.
President participating remotely from South Lansing, Michigan.
Council member Hussein.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
Council member Jackson.
President participating remotely from the northeastern part of the southwestern central side of Lansing.
Council member Spetafor.
Well, I was trying to find the words, but I think I am also present participating remotely from the northeastern part of the south central part of Lansing.
That won't be in the minutes.
Okay.
Council member Spitzley.
I'll make it simple, participate remotely from Pensacola, Florida.
Council member Wood.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
We have a forum of eight in attendance.
Very good. The next item on our agenda, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
We're on to meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Is there anyone council wishes us to keep in our thoughts as we reflect in a moment of meditation? I see council member Wood and council member Hussein.
Thank you, President Spetafor. Melvin Kelly, who was a foster grandparent with the retired and senior volunteer program passed away. And he worked in our Lansing school systems as a foster grandparent and will be missed. And so if we could remember his family at this time, thank you.
Council member Hussein.
Thank you. So I'm asking for folks to remember the family and friends and keep them in your prayers of Tina Harper. Tina Harper, longtime Southwest Lansing resident, incredible community advocate. I've actually spent some time out with her, time with her, sorry, on the Colonial Townhouse's Executive Board of Directors. Unfortunately, she lost her battle with COVID this past Friday. It came as a shock to her, to her friends, it came to a shock or as a shock, sorry, to her family and coworkers. So in any event, if you could keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers tonight as they, as they grapple with just the absolute unexpected in this tragedy, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'll ask the council to please keep Mel and Kelly and Tina Harper's family in your thoughts this evening as we reflect in a moment of meditation. Thank you. Now please join me for the pledge of allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we're to approval printing printed council proceedings. You were sent over the copies for April 26th. Your consideration.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the print accounts proceedings from April 26th, 2021 as presented.
Thank you. There is a proper motion before us. Is there anyone wishing to make comment or corrections to the proceedings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Bets.
Yes.
Council member Dunbar.
Yes.
Council member Garza.
Yes.
Council member Hussein.
Yes.
Council member Jackson.
Yes.
Council member Spetafor.
Yes.
Council member Spitzley.
Yes.
Council member Wood.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Are there any late items?
Not this evening, sir, no.
Then we are next to comments by council member and the city clerk.
Any council members wishing to make comment this evening? Look at this agenda and make your decision wisely. Oh, Mr. Vice President. Go ahead.
I'll try, I'll try to be quick. First, I just wanted to remind folks that councilman Garza and myself will not be having a South Lansing constituent contact this Saturday at 10:00 AM. And the reason is that we are actually having a budget input session via Zoom again, that is this Saturday, May 8th at 10:00 AM. To consider essentially, you know, input on this year's recommended executive budget. Also wanted to thank a few folks. I wanted to thank Andrew Miller of Public Services as well as Delisa Fontaine of Neighbors and Citizen Engagement for their work in coast-like commons. A few constituents got with me, there was some concern about damage to the Graves Park sign as well as damage to their neighborhood association sign. And they literally within minutes responded and they were working solutions. And it's signed sometimes, you know, might not seem like a big deal, but it really is a point of pride for so many in our community. And so I really appreciate their, their work and really ongoing work because we still are, are working some solutions for those issues. And then I wanted to thank Dick Peffley and Kelvin Jones with the Border Water Light. I don't know what it was last week, but councilman Garza and myself were tagged in just a number of posts that ended up being BWL related. There was one issue, there's a what looks to be a vacant lot on Jolly. And so I'm sure people have, I actually just received a question about this prior to this meeting. But in any event, this is near the Skywalk at the, I think it's Connors and Jolly intersection. In any event, we found out that through, and actually I want to say thank you to Meredith Johnson of Code Compliance as well, because she helped me identify owners of this property. That was the Border Water Light. We found out that there was an existing well and there was some preventative maintenance, but there was a lot of concern regarding construction and things like that on that site. And folks were concerned that something that maybe had not been approved by the city was being done. But Dick Peffley actually got right into his truck, drove down there, got to the bottom of it, got us the information we were able to communicate to our, to our constituents. So I really appreciate that. And then later in the week, we had a pretty significant issue with, with traffic lights and, or not traffic lights, sorry, street lights being out in the 500, 600 block of Kendon. And apparently consumers' energy was in the area and they were replacing some gas lines, still are replacing some gas lines and hit some of the Border Water Lights cables. And they prioritized that. I believe Kelvin Jones actually went down and talked to citizens that were in that 600 block of Kendon. And I believe by Friday afternoon, they had those, those lights back up. And so just that, that above and beyond service, we really appreciate. And I wanted to make sure those folks were recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Clerk, council member Garza.
Thanks, cheers, Spetafor. I just wanted to include that Peter Spetafor was on that as well. So I know you contacted Dick Peffley to help out with the 500, 600 block of Kendon. So I appreciate the, the update, Adam.
Thank you. Other council members? All right, well, I'm, Mr. Vice President took care of it, but we do have our budget input session this Saturday, the 8th of May at 10:00 AM. I'll bring the coffee. I think Adam's bringing the donuts, so just be prepared for that. But we'll see you all there. We will have a presentation from, from Jake. And when I asked him if he wanted to pre-record it, he said the budget doesn't take weekends. So he'll be there on Saturday morning and helping us get that, get the information out to the residents. So I appreciate that, Jake, very much. That is it for me, and that looks like it's it from the council. So, Mr. Clerk, do you have any, any comments for this evening?
Yeah, just like to share that tomorrow, the voters in the Holt Schools and the Waverly Schools, we have an opportunity to vote in the school bond elections. We haven't been getting a few calls today, what of folks who live in other parts of the city. It's a very small sliver of the city. It's less than 2,000 on the city's south and west side. But for those voters, the polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The South Side Community Center at North Elementary and at Cumberland School, only for those voters, so not even the entire precinct. And so if you're not sure if you reside in Holt or the Waverly School District, or you have other questions, you can call us tomorrow at 483-4131. Starting at 7:00 AM, we, the offices will be open and you can make sure, you know, are you supposed to vote or not? Or, you know, those questions for this small election for the city, but certainly important to those, the school districts and the students of those districts for that. And so next we're on to community event announcements. Anyone has a, raise their hand if they have a one minute to speak, share details on their events. Like we have Loretta Stanaway.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, let me just go over real quick the instructions to raise your hand. It's Alt-Y on a PC, Option-Y on a Mac, and Star 9 if you've dialed it on your phone.
Good evening. I'm just here to say once again, it's that time of year. So on Saturday, May 22nd, at Evergreen Cemetery, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Or until they're gone, the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will have 125 free seed geraniums for people to use to plant on graves in the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen and North and Mount Hope. So again, Saturday, May 22nd, 10 to 2 at Evergreen Cemetery, free flowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta.
Thank you. I think that concludes. I don't see any other hands up for that portion. We are to speaker registration now for public legislative matters. Those wishing to make public comments need to raise their hands by the end of the first speaker's comments or three minutes. And after that first, three minutes after the first speaker starts, for those on phone, again, you can dial Star 9.
Before we get started on that though, Mr. Clerk, I just want to let everyone know that the rank choice voting resolution did not come out of committee this evening, so we will not be voting on it. Or discussing it.
Okay. Now on to the first comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a variety of things to share. First, I would hope you would all help me welcome Robin Anderson King, who's our new neighborhood coordinator. You all knew that Delisa was doing that job and she is promoted to director, which I think we all agree is a great thing. And she is now, has that position filled. So I met Robin today. She's a former Parks employee, so don't talk to Brett Koschinsky because he's unhappy that Delisa took, took Robin away. But we're very excited to have this neighborhood coordinator. Once again, she's really excited to get into the neighborhoods. Want to remind everybody that tomorrow night is the opening day for the lug nuts. They have limited capacity, but I think tickets are available. So the season begins tomorrow after a year off, certainly under all of the conditions that the governor and DHHS has set. But they're welcoming people back in and baseball will start once again tomorrow in Lansing. I'm excited to, to announce that we had the grand opening of our materials resource facility, recycling materials recycling facility or MRF, which will be incredible for the environment. It will recycle materials and it will save us money because we're not shipping these recyclables out to Detroit. So that was open during the week. We got to cut a ribbon and take a tour. And I'm sure if you all want to take a tour, you can as well. But it's an incredible facility that's going to be great for sustainability. Lori Welch was there. It's going to be great for our environment. And I'm very excited that we've been able to, to get that finalized. And of course, not only is it a partnership between Lansing and East Lansing where we're both bringing our recyclables, but it's located right here in South Lansing. I don't, I guess it's the, the northeast part of South Lansing, trying to, to help out. But it's right off Pennsylvania, just north of the zoo. So very exciting. Wanted to update, I know I mentioned this maybe a few weeks ago, that we had put in requests to Congresswoman Slotkin's office for some projects, for some funding. And I'm proud to announce that, that we were included. Several of our projects were included. We have a police reimagining proposal that we put in that LPD worked on and we submitted through the administration for these teams, these critical assistance teams, teams of social, one social worker, one paramedic, a community health worker and a police officer. And the teams would go out into the city and respond and where you needed a social worker, the social worker would be the lead, where you need a police officer, the police officer would be the, the need, the lead. And so on, I think we requested funding for three teams. So we're hopeful that we will get that, that grant and we're, we're sending you all the one pager. I don't know that it was ready yet, so we'll be sending council the one pager so you can see what we sent to the councilwoman's office. Additionally, there was grant dollars put in for, for Michigan Avenue for infrastructure rehab on Michigan Avenue. So we're very excited about that. Congresswoman also put in dollars for Lansing Community College's Mobile Healthcare Learning Initiative, which is a mobile lab training for healthcare careers. These are all been submitted to the appropriations committee. It's not, they're all going to be funded, but they're all submitted to the appropriations committee. So that's exciting news, trying to bring federal dollars right back here to Lansing, dollars that we could use for our community. I'm not going to read them out, but we announced our neighborhood advisory grants. And there were a lot of neighborhoods that received dollars. We can get you the list if we haven't. Delisa just put out a lot of this after the incredible work of our neighborhood advisory board. Tracy Winston is the chair. They were incredible. They did just incredible work. So I want to thank the members of the neighborhood advisory board. And we, we gave out money to just, I think every neighborhood that, that asked for their top priority, they all got them. A few got second priorities, but a lot of money went out into our neighborhoods. You're going to see a lot of events and sign toppers and newsletters and a whole variety of things that are really going to improve our neighborhood. So we're very excited to get that out. The governor has announced her return to work, her, her vac, I forgot what she called it, but you know, what the, what percentages we'll need to get back to work. It was, what was it?
Back to normal.
Back to normal, back to normal. Thank you. So we're, we're monitoring that very closely. When the state hits 55%, people will be able to go back to work. And then it's, it ratchets upwards from there towards 70% when there's no more masks and things. So we're going to keep close eye on that as well as a close eye on Ingham County's numbers as we prepare to have employees back and, and the public back. And she's also utilizing the, the return to work task force recommendations, which I was proud to sit on along with Ryan Seabolt, who's county commissioner and works for the AFL-CIO and a variety of others. But Ryan and I were Lansing members on that task force and it was a great effort. So very proud of that. I'm almost done, Mr. President. We are, I'm proud to announce that, well, I know, I know that we're part of the gun safety consortium. We announced that and that was exciting. So Lansing will be piloting some new smart gun technology that hopefully we and other communities around the state, around the country will be able to use and then get on the shelves. So when people buy their guns, they've got this smart gun technology that will cut down on any accidental discharges, any, you know, tragic situations like we had here with the, with the young child who, who got the, the mom's gun. It will crack down on illegal guns and other things where they're stolen. So we're excited to be part of that, one of the first communities piloting those, some of those programs. And finally, Kim Coleman asked me to mention that, and Mr. President and I have spoken about this, that there were some questions about the, the money in the budget, the $300,000 in the budget for the, the racial justice and equity, the DEI action plan. And she talked to several of those communities. I think she sent the list to, to council. And she said that the folks in San Antonio who have been doing this for several years have offered to come in and do a presentation to the committee, the whole on, on the work they're doing and the dollars and how they allocated them. So I've spoken to the president and I think we can work out a date for them to come in and present to, to council or to the committee, the whole. I think that's what I've got. Sorry to talk so fast, but wanted to get all that out, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to let know, you did mention the back to normal, just the council while we're assembled here. I've spoken to our council staff as well and we're working with Mr. Tate and others to make sure that we're following rules on getting our council staff back in the office as well. They're all eager to do it, but we want to make sure we do it correctly. So I just, sorry to interject there, but wanted to make sure you know that conversation was being had. And we are still working to get Mr. Tate in to talk about the city's return to work plan, but we're, we're, we're holding Cal for the budget for the next few weeks. Because we don't think we'll be at 55% at least for a couple more weeks, so.
And he's ready and willing. So you just let him know when. He and I talked about that this afternoon.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Clerk, moving on.
Okay, we're on the public comment for legislative matters. Legislative matter consists of items four through eight on the consent agenda and resolutions for action. We did receive eight emails in support of item six, which you now said has been old. But we do add that to the record and we had one against the rank choice voting item. So we'll keep that in the record for the next, next meeting as well. And the public may comment for up to three minutes. And our first speaker is Loretta Stanaway.
Hello.
Before you move on, I just wanted one more reminder for folks how to raise your hand. It's Alt-Y on a Windows, Option-Y on an Apple computer and Star 9 on the phone. Cherry, Loretta, the floor is yours.
Okay, I just wanted to address the issue of the millage ballot proposal and language and all of that stuff. I was very, very involved and active in, in that initial millage passage. And I specifically remember, as Carol Wood mentioned, that it was presented to the public as 1.5, 1.5 and 1.0. And when it was renewed in 2016, whether or not it specifically spelled that out in the ballot language or not, that is how it was presented to the public. And I strongly expect that's what the public is expecting again this time around. And it's, it's something that has passed easily and about at the same levels that the park millage typically passes. So I am sure there probably is a little more concern this year because of the issues going on politically. But I seriously doubt that there's any real risk of that millage not passing as it has passed in the prior two itinerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta.
So next is Lansing own followed by Dr. Jeffrey Brown.
I just want to use this time to tell Andy to shut the fuck up, please. Just shut the fuck up.
Point of order.
Yep, madam, I'm, councilmember Wood.
This language is absolutely not acceptable.
Mr. Lynn, you've been asked a couple of times in the past to please monitor the language, we give you wide berth on comments, but the language cannot be offensive. In that nature, we have issues to deal with in terms of our broadcast. And if it happens again, we'll have to seek an option to prevent you from commenting if we can't.
President, there is a council rule on this also.
Mr. Smirka.
If it happens again.
Mr. Smirka, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I said there is a council rule on the quorum in the city council member, if it happens again, I'll, I'll point it out to you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please continue. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Our next speaker is Dr. Jeffrey Brown, followed by G, our last speaker, Julia Kramer.
Thank you so much. My name is Jeffrey Brown and I simply wanted to express my support for border choice and engagement in terms of the, have the override ballot initiative that's up for consideration tonight. I have no doubts that this body, in addition to invested community members, will do all they can to ensure that voters are fully informed and ready to vote their conscience come time at election. I just wanted to share that and thank you so much for your time.
Okay, and our final speaker is Julia Kramer.
Hello. Um, I would like to say that I support the amended essential services millage that unfortunately the council did not support during their committee of the whole meeting earlier this evening. This amended version would have voiced the intentions of the council, prioritizing roads and the fire department and de-prioritizing the police department. A significant portion of your constituents have made it clear that we want you to de-prioritize the police in any way that you can. It's disappointing to hear you literally say, this is how we've done it in the past, so this is how we will continue to do it. And I really hope to see stronger leadership from this council in the future on this, these types of issues. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers. So next we are on to the consent agenda.
Before we do that, I think we have a public hearing though, Mr. Clerk, is that correct?
I don't believe we have a hearing, but let me double check.
No, tonight's the budget public hearing. Am I wrong?
I think that's May 10th, but I.
Nope, it was, it was tonight.
We have had exhaustive conversations about the budget and we do have a budget input session, May 8th at 10 o'clock AM via Zoom, can be found on our website. Is there anything else we'd like to say about the budget during this part of it as a hearing? Councilmember Bets.
I'm just wondering if it's legal to not have the official public hearing now? Do we need to have it now? Do we need to announce and all of that? Or can we just kind of let it go by?
This is tech, I mean, our hearings are pretty perfunctory during, at this point, in, if there's, especially if something like this, and we've already posted for today. We can post again for in the future if need be, but I think we're okay, but I'll, yeah. I'll let councilmember Wood speak, councilmember Hussein, and then Mr. Smirka, if you have anything opinion that's different than mine, we will, we'll go to you, but councilmember Wood.
I, I believe that because it was in the printed agenda, even though it wasn't announced by the clerk, it was also posted as part of what the clerk does. You know, as part of any public hearing that we have, that that meets the legal requirements as far as that. And people could have spoke on that, but, but didn't now, you know, I mean, someone that could argue the fact that I don't get the agenda and, and those types of items. But I think we meet the legal requirement. With that, I'm sure the city attorney will weigh in if we don't. And I see the clerk has his hand up too.
Charter requires a public hearing, so does state law on the budget. Whether that has been satisfied at this point or in the future is another question. This has been noticed up as a public hearing and you can open it as a public hearing.
Tell you what, just to be safe, everyone put your hands down. We are going to reopen public comment on the budget. So you will have three minutes on the budget. This is not a typical way we would do these, but because of the oversight, I'm going to, we're going to do it this way unless there's objection from the council. For, oh, for, for what?
From bringing this up.
Oh.
No, I apologize. I apologize for.
No, that's okay. So we're going to, we're going to reopen it up. If you, if you wish to speak on the budget, which has been presented in Cal several times. And we have one more opportunity for input on the 10th, I'm sorry, the 8th, and then the 10th, and then the 17th. Please feel free to raise your hand. And you will have the three minutes allotted for those wishing to speak, but please limit your comments to the budget.
And I see our first speaker is Melissa Huber, and I'll just add that it has been posted on the glass. It's in the city pulse. It has been properly notarized, but then my, forgetting to mention it at the beginning. But Melissa, it is your turn to.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and I know you've already had some discussion on the CDB, do you budget and have that resolution? But I would like to propose that we allot some of the money that we typically get from CDBG to be able to do some remediation for the homes that have been damaged through the home repair, the low income homeownership program that we've had at least two people come out to say that their homes have been damaged. And I know we've got several more that are afraid to speak out because of how the city has treated residents. So I think we need to do a thorough investigation of the 60 or so people who participated in the last year to find out from an independent source, how many people have suffered financial and other damages from the city-run program? And that we make sure that we allot some of our CDBG funds to help remediate those situations that we in the city created in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment on the public hearing on the agenda. Now to referral.
Okay, and the budget, the budget for fiscal year 2021?
We'll refer that to the committee of the whole, please.
We are on to the consent agenda.
Sir, Mr. Clerk, I have been informed that Mr. Councilmember Jackson will be pulling the one item from the consent agenda to discuss, so there will be no consent agenda.
Then we are to revolution for action.
All right, council member Jackson, tribute in memory of Oscar Bernard Stallworth, Senior.
Yes, thank you. Just want to share a little bit about the life of Oscar Bernard Stallworth, Senior. He was beloved by many. He's born and raised in Alabama in 1944. He graduated high school in 1961 there. He went to the Tennessee State University where he studied mechanical engineering. From there, he went on to work at Goodyear in Ohio and then Goodyear in Lansing, along with Ford, where he was an accountant, executive. And also after he retired from. where he was an accountant, executive, and also after he retired from Ford, he worked with Lansing's very own Dean Transportation. He was a Alpha Phi Alpha man and a volunteer with the Lansing Democrat Party. He was a avid YMCA workout person where he would go to the gym at before 6:00 AM. Only reason I know that is because my wife is there and she's good friends with him and he's always there. And he meets people with a smile and a greeting and he doesn't know a stranger. Mister, and I'll read the, therefore let it be resolved that the city of Lansing, city council recognized Oscar Bernard Stallworth, Senior, and his dedication to building a strong family unity, improving his community and providing a voice for the less fortunate. Oscar's funeral was last week and his family will miss him along with many other people in the community.
Would you like to move the resolution, Councilmember Jackson?
I would move the resolution to recognize Oscar Bernard Stallworth, Jr. Today, Senior.
We can also recognize junior, but let's stick with senior for tonight. Uh, so thank you very much. The resolution has been properly moved before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Clerk Jackson, please call the roll.
I'll send member Garza.
Yes.
I'll send member Hussein.
Yes.
I'll send member Jackson.
Yes.
I'll send member Spatterford.
Yes.
Member Spitzley.
Yes.
I'll send member Wood.
Yes.
I'll send member Bets.
Yes.
I'll send member Dunbar.
Yes.
No motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. Next item is a resolution, uh, with a special assessment for the Glenn Burn Commons Trash and Grass Abatement. It's the role, uh, GB 2020, Councilmember Dunbar from the committee on operations.
Thank you very much. We've dealt with this quite a number of times in the last few weeks. This is finalizing the role for, um, lawn maintenance and trash removal in the common space that is in the Glenn Burn subdivision. The amount incurred between March 15th, 2020 and November 15th, 2020 was $21,845, which has been allocated over the, um, over all of the residents that are in that subdivision for, uh, $47.91 per household. And today I move that we set the role.
Very much. That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion on the Glenn Burn Common Special Assessment Rule? Mr. Vice President.
Just very quickly, I want to, um, thank this body's, uh, continued support, um, of, of this assessment. Uh, back in 2000, I think it was 2015, 2016, um, a number of us were engaged by constituents in the Lansing Eaton Neighborhood Organization, um, in that area, that neighborhood. And this was a huge, huge, you know, prior to obviously us actually going in there, uh, through the pub, public improvement process and then, and then assessing folks for work done. This was a huge, uh, health and safety, um, issue for those folks over there. Uh, and so that area is now almost a point of pride for them. Um, and I, again, I just really appreciate the continued support from this body. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you, President Spatterford. Councilmember Dunbar, can you tell us how many pieces of property are owned by the city in, in that section?
Um, it would take me a minute to go through this list. Which, does everybody else have it pulled up? I mean, I'm going through.
Yeah, I'm looking through it. I see. It's in the packet.
Yeah, I'm going, I don't see them. I see a several that are owned by the school district, Board of Water and Light.
They're, they're.
I see five.
Yeah, I see five as well.
So there's more owned by the school district and Board of Water and Light than there are for the city. Is that correct?
I would, yeah, I would say that.
Okay, thank you.
There are quite a few owned by the Lansing Housing Commission as well.
But those are.
There's two owned by the school district and the five by the city. And one by the Board of Water and Light.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, that, that was a quick answer to a question. So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on the special assessment?
I'll send member Hussein.
Yeah.
I'll send member Jackson.
Yes.
I'll send member Spatterford.
Yes.
I'll send member Spitzley.
Yes.
I'll send member Wood.
Yes.
I'll send member Bets.
Yes.
I'll send member Dunbar.
Yes.
I'll send member Garza.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much. Um, next item, bearing in mind, we did skip the charter amendment on ranked choice voting this evening as it did not come out of committee. Item number six, a ballot proposal for the essential services millage restoration. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So we, uh, discussed this in the committee of the whole, sorry. Um, the city charter, uh, as is caps the millage rate at 20 mils. What that means is essentially $20 for every $1,000 of a property's taxable value. However, uh, I think it was back in like the 1970s, uh, the state constitution was amended, it's known as the Headley Amendment that essentially limits the cap to a lower rate, however, that's subject, um, to an override by a city's voters. Uh, so we held votes back in 2011, uh, in 2016. I think prior to that, we were assessing at 15.44 mils. Uh, but in any event, uh, voters of Lansing approved Headley Cap overrides in order to restore, uh, the authorized millage to the, to the maximum 20 mils, uh, under the charter and those were for a five-year, uh, period respectively. The current Headley Cap override that was approved in 2016, uh, permits the city to levy the current 19.44 mils, uh, but is set to expire June 31st of this year unless the voters approve, uh, a new Headley override or amendment override. Um, if the Headley Cap override is not approved, let me make sure I have this number right. Uh, the city's millage rate in 2022 would be reduced, uh, and limited to 18.865 mils. Uh, so our intention, or the city's intention, sorry, is to continue to levy the current 19.44, uh, mils, uh, the tax rate in 2022, uh, in 2023, uh, to ensure essential services such as, uh, police, fire, uh, road and sidewalk, uh, repair. So again, because the property tax, uh, rate of 19.44 would exceed the city's 2022 Headley Cap. It does require approval by the voters to override the Headley Cap as provided by the state constitution. And then the number given to us, if approved, um, this millage would generate two point, I'm sorry, $2,770,894. Uh, again, to be used for fire, policing, infrastructure. Uh, if approved, this would go before the voters, um, on the August 3rd ballot. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. There is a motion before us. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll declare, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson. I'll send member Spatterford.
Yes.
I'll send member Spitzley.
Yes.
I'll send member Wood.
Yes.
I'll send member Bets. I'll send member Dunbar.
Yes.
I'll send member Garza.
Yes.
I'll send member Hussein.
Yes.
Uh, the motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. A motion passes. The next item is the Community Development Block Grant FY 2021, 2022 Annual Action Plan Resolution. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So we've, um, talked about this at length. Uh, again, this is the final step, uh, of this process. Um, that did include steps before the planning board. We also had a public hearing on this. Um, I don't have the date with me, but, uh, we also had a public hearing before city council. I think it was at the last meeting. Um, and this pertains to entitlement funds, uh, that we receive, uh, from HUD. I do want to list the, the numbers, but we got a, uh, text from Doris Witherspoon, I actually, uh, incorrectly cited a number. So I'm going to go through these very quickly. Um, in terms of community development block grant funds, uh, the action plan contemplates $2,057,221. And that's for things like single-family residential rehab, um, economic development in CDBG eligible areas and the like. Uh, in terms of home funds, uh, we're looking at about $768,361 and that deals with new construction of affordable housing as well as down payment assistance to eligible recipients. And this is the number, uh, that I fudged last time. In terms of ESG funds, um, I believe I listed that at $176,439, um, dollars. Uh, and that's actually, uh, in the plan, uh, as written, $174,439, which is a decrease of about 1% from last year. And this is used for, uh, street outreach and, and rapid rehousing and, and other, uh, such program activity. So with that being said, again, this is the, uh, final, this is the final step. I would move the, uh, Community Development Block Grant fiscal year 2021, 2022 Annual Action Plan.
Very good. The resolution has been properly moved. Is there further comments or discussion? Someone's got a home phone. Uh, no further discussion being seen. If the clerk would please call the roll.
I'll send member Spatterford.
Yes.
I'll send member Spitzley.
Yes.
I'll send member Wood.
Yes.
I'll send member Bets.
Yes.
I'll send member Dunbar.
Yes.
I'll send member Garza.
Yes.
I'll send member Hussein.
Yeah.
I'll send member Jackson.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. That moves us out of the resolutions, Mr. Clerk, on to speaker registration for a com, public comment on all city government related matters.
So for those wishing to make public comments, uh, you raise your hand. You can start doing so now. Uh, remember you can do star nine for those who are on phones. And also use your, um, keypad. The mark as well, and we'll conclude, people join three minutes after the first speaker, first person speaks. So then we're on next to report to city officer boards and commissions, communication petitions and other city-related matters.
Vice President.
Sure, I would move that all items be considered red and full and, uh, proper referrals be made by you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, uh, for, um, you know what, you can always vote on that. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, uh.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
I'll send member Wood.
Yes.
I'll send member Bets.
Yes.
I'll send member Dunbar.
Yes.
I'll send member Garza.
Yes.
I'll send member Hussein.
Yeah.
I'll send member Jackson.
Yes.
I'll send member Spatterford.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero. So start reading to the record.
Thank you.
Uh, from the city clerk, minutes of boards, commissions placed on file.
Placed on file.
Sole source purchased, the Lansing Police Department requests for professional services of Dr. David Carter for, as a consultant for management analysis, traffic stops.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Sole source purchased, Public Service Department, East Water Division requests for Coal Corp. As a vendor of UV disinfection system of lamps and parts.
Ways and Means.
Public improvement, Alpha Devonshire Sewer, Water Main and Road Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, the City Operations Committee.
Grant Amendment Service Training Office Prosecutor's Grant on the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Yep, Committee on Ways and Means.
We have a grant acceptance, has their mitigation competitive grants.
Committee on Ways and Means.
We have appointment, Terry Taylor as assistant member of the Police and Fire Retirement Board as a trustee for term to expire of June 30th, 2025.
The Committee on Po, Ways and Means. Committee on Ways and Means.
Uh, we have appointment of Mallory Willis as an at-large member of the Board of Fire Commissioners for term to expire of June 30th, 2023.
Committee on Public Safety.
Okay, we have communication petitions, claim appeal, claim 1837 Carol Johnson for $4,946 in trash removal fees at 816 West Shiloh East, Wosse Street.
The Committee on City Operations.
Claim appeal 1838 Eric Lee for $14,476 in trash removal fees at 3222 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. Number M.
The Committee on City Operations.
Communication from Julie Kramer in support of Black Lives Matter Lansing.
Places on file, please.
Communication from Alexis Duffy in support of Black Lives Matter Lansing.
The Committee on City Operations. I'm sorry. Please place that on file. Skip one.
And then we have the notice from the Michigan Patrol Commission, the Vet LLC request for transfer of ownership of 2020 STD and STM Sunday with sales permit, Sunday sales permit to remain in escrow at 6065 South Washington Avenue.
Please send that to Committee on City Operations.
And next we are two remarks by council members.
Further remarks from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on, Mr. Clerk.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want to thank everybody for your work on the millage. Um, looking forward to, to getting that on the ballot and helping the voters weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Then we are to public comment on city government related matters. We have, uh, remember we have three minutes to speak and any city related topic. And our first speaker and looks like only speaker so far is Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening. And again this evening, I have a question for Brandon Bets and that is, why are you still there? You have been asked repeatedly by your constituents and other voters to step down. You are not in a position to be an effective representative. You owe it to your constituents to have someone in that seat who can properly represent them, who can attend committee meetings, who can partake in decision-making before things come to a final vote and you need to resign. Thank you.
Okay, then our next speaker is Michael Lynn, Jr., followed by Julia Kramer.
Yeah, I wanted to address the fact that, uh, I just got like four phone calls stating that I told, uh, somebody to shut the F up. And Spatterford, you called out my name on here saying that you guys are going to censor me. Can you explain that? Can somebody explain this to me? No? All right. Thank you very much. I, I guess you guys can holler at me later to let me know, uh, what it is that was said and what you guys are talking about, but I appreciate it. I have nothing else to say, y'all.
Our next speaker is Julia Kramer followed by Lansing Own as the final speaker.
Hello, um, I, I don't even necessarily, I'm not even necessarily of the mind that, um, that councilperson Bets needs to resign. I'm not even going to say that, but I, you owe your constituents a public statement. You've said nothing to us since the events of this winter. Um, it's truly unbelievable that you're just participating on this council as if nothing has happened. Um, and, um, you know, you're representing us, you're representing me, word one, and I would really like to know what is going on. I would really like to at least have a statement, at least have an apology of some kind. I would like to be able to engage with you about your participation, about your representation of me. And, um, it's really disappointing that, that we haven't heard anything from you. Um, and we just see you on these meetings and, and we don't get any engagement. So, um, that's it. That's what I expect. Thanks.
And then our last speaker, I believe, has left, so I guess we do not have a final speaker.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, at 7:50, we are adjourned.